Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the Sherborne School Committee meeting to order. Today is March 11, 2025. We are meeting in the Dover Sherborne Middle School Library and the time is now 6:30. In addition to our wonderful Sherborne School Committee members Kristin, Becca, Megga, and Nathaniel, myself Christine, we are delighted to have our Metco liaison Kimberly joining us as well. The first item on the agenda is community comments. We've provided a Zoom link for those who wish to make a comment, but for whom it is not possible or preferred to attend in person this evening. I don't believe there are any community comments. Except from the cam, so very good. Okay, so we will move on. And the next item on the agenda is the FY '26 budget. And if I may, this is a continued discussion regarding the FY '26 budget. This is version two. And before I hand it over to Superintendent McCoy and Don Vittori, I'd like to say a few words.
Can I just interject for one second?
Yes, of course.
Because the continued discussion and then we'll do open hearing. But the continued discussion, I just wanted to let you know that we did receive our transportation bid and it was in line with what we have in the budget. So there are no additional budget adjustments to come forward. So the presentation that we'll be doing tonight, the open hearing, is what you saw version 2.0 in February. I will be bringing forward the actual contractual numbers for the bus contract to all three committees at the April 1 meeting. We typically like to have that approved. You each have your own contract, but it's nice to talk about it with all three school committees since it's sort of a shared service provider. So you will see the actual cost per year over the next three years and the two potential extensions when we meet on April 1.
Thank you so much, Don. The school committee takes the budgeting process very seriously, carefully reviewing every decision to ensure fiscal responsibility while meeting the needs of students and staff. We enter each school year reviewing budgets on a monthly basis and receiving updates from Don at all Sherborne School Committee meetings. Our goal is to create an environment where every student feels supported, challenged, and engaged. The FY '26 budget reflects this commitment by prioritizing academic excellence, social emotional well-being, and inclusive learning opportunities. We also recognize that a strong school depends on well-supported educators and administrators. By investing in professional development, instructional resources, and innovative tools, we empower our faculty to deliver the highest quality education. When teachers and school leaders have the resources they need, student learning and overall school success flourish. Recently, we presented the FY '26 budget to the Sherborne Guidance Advisory. We are thankful for their time, their consideration, thoughtful questions and comments. Our appreciation always extends to the entire Pine Hill community, parents, caregivers, and importantly, the Sherborne Town members and neighbors who place their trust in us and the school leadership. Their unwavering support strengthens Pine Hill and ensures that our town's children thrive. Together, we remain committed to fostering a school where students grow, educators excel, and our community continues to flourish. With that, I will hand it over to Superintendent McCoy.
Great, thank you. So tonight during this public hearing, I'd like to echo everything that our chair said. I'd like to thank the taxpayers for continuing to support the education for our students that they deserve and are therefore able to achieve at high levels. As you know, this is a long process. It begins in October when our principals take their school improvement plans and meet with their educators, their teacher leaders, and decide what they need moving forward either by adding to or making changes within the budget. They then come forward to Central Office and meet with Don, Denny, Kate McCarthy, and myself to look at it from not only the fiscal perspective, but also student support, teaching, and learning. And holistically, are we meeting the needs of all students? And then throughout the winter, we begin with a budget presentation to you in November. And then as changes happen and more information is gained either through state funding or known retirements, we update the budget for you and engage you in conversations about how best to move forward. And here we are tonight with a second version that we'd like you to consider approving to move forward to the town level, which will be considered at town meeting and then voted upon later this spring. Without further ado, I'll turn it over to Don to go over the details. And thank you as always, Don, for leading us through this process.
My pleasure. So I look for the opportunity to sort of present this and hopefully there's some community members at home seeing this overview. As Christine mentioned, she went through the school committee rules and responsibilities. Beth mentioned the administrative roles and responsibilities. Christine also mentioned that back in February, the three of us met with the whole Sherborne Advisory Committee who was able to do a similar presentation to this and hear their questions because they are the ones that will then take the budget to the next step after you approve it this evening to have it approved at the town level. And annual basis, in March, we have a public hearing. Again, this was the opportunity that if there were community members here in person, they are actually able to ask questions during the meeting when it's the open hearing piece. So that's sort of how that's built is just that we don't have anyone in the audience. But hopefully, if anyone's watching at home, if they have questions, they can feel free to send to Christine or Central Office for any answers. Oops, backwards. So our budget assumptions, and this is, you know, we've been talking about these budget assumptions since November, is regular school operations with level enrollment. Shared with school committee and advisory was our 10-year historical and our five-year projections. And so we are, we use that as our guide to determining the number of sections. We do build this budget in compliance with the town's budget guidance, which is level funded, although they do give us the capacity to increase our budget based on contractual agreements, which makes up about 85% of our budget. And then again, we build it in alignment with the district strategy and the school improvement plans, both of which we've talked about throughout the year and those main five categories, buckets, as we call them. And we also continue to assess student needs both in a general and special education lens. As you know, last year, we moved the Connections program over to Chicreen. So we're constantly looking at the most efficient way to operate our, both our general and special education programming. So I know it's a small screen, but in here is like our budget drivers in district. And as I mentioned, payroll represents really the bulk of your budget. Our contractual increases for fiscal year '26 were 3%. Keep in mind that your educators are also receiving step in lane increases on top of that 3%. So on the average, an educator, if we looked at just their salaries, we're probably seeing about a 4.6% increase. So think about building that into your budget. And just keep in mind that this is the last year of all of our association contracts. So we will be working on the next three-year contract when we come back to school. And probably, hopefully, by the time we complete the fiscal year '27 budget, we'll have the contracts in place so we know exactly what to budget. Keep in mind though, we opened the school year with significant salary savings of approximately $260,000 from a lot of staffing changes that took place. So we're seeing that both as a favorable variance in your current operating statements, but also it flowed into the budget, which definitely helped offset the salary increases. And actually, it also offset the majority of your salary increases, which is showing us a little bit of anomaly for this year when we look at your total increase year over year. And then we also had an additional retirement that we brought forward in version 2.0. So you pull all that together and that basically is offsetting the, all the salary increases that we had in your general budget. We also, what is one of your biggest drivers is your staffing is based on enrollment and educational needs. We were continuing to tweak the movement of the Connections over to Chicreen. So there were some reductions for related services, about $48,000. And we did though have to, on the flip side, add some FTEs to your budget for fiscal year '25. And that included a .2 FTE for our English language learners, a .2 FTE because we've created the new position for a pre-K director, which is shared with Chicreen, and because a student needs two special ed EAs. So those are, were in your fiscal year '25 budget and also built into your fiscal year '26 budget. So that was approximately 115,000 of added positions, but all that were required to service the students that are currently at Pine Hill. Your student enrollment remains level with 21 sections. Your, our current census is 385. Our projections using the blended one-year and three-year, if you remember, we took the highest of each of those, that we were in a good position for budgeting, is 373. That does give you class size ranges of 17 to 20. Keep in mind, your guidelines are 18 to 23, but when you start talking about three and four sections, you're going to get down, if you, if we cut a section, you'd be over the 23. So we're in that sweet spot right now where you have 17 to 20 and you can't go one way or the other because you would be off. So if that question comes up, I think that's important because that was something that Advisory brought up. But that's how we do look at that. And we will continue to look at enrollment as the spring rolls out just to make sure that everything is sort of coming in where we projected. And we'll also be looking at the incoming kindergarten class. We continue to sort of do trend budgeting and that just really is a term that says we look over a period of time and if we see an account that's always under or an account that's always over, we try to adjust the budget for that. I pretty strongly make sure that our billing people use the budget, use the light items that the expense is for and not where they have money because we really want to make sure our budget is aligned with how we're spending. So you could see some light items over budget, but it's typically that we're telling them that they have to use some of the savings from another budget. So we look at things in groups, but it's very important to us to have expenses coded appropriately so then we do the reporting to the Department of Ed. We're doing it in the function codes that is good data reporting for them to review. And we are always very diligent about removing one-time expenses. And as we know, we added the math curriculum this past year. So we did take a $75,000 reduction out of the textbook line item to cover that one-time purchase. On the flip side, there are some increases that we needed to build into the fiscal year '26 budget based on some of the experience we were having in '27 and some in '25, but also some of the needs that we are forecasting for '26 around software. As you know, we've talked about, we were running a negative budget line item for fiscal year '25 for that because we have expanded some of the use of some of the curriculum software, which we think is invaluable to the student's success. So we've built that into the fiscal year '26 budget is about 10,000 for that. And then we're starting to start, starting to have to do more device replacement. As you know, we purchased a lot of technology during COVID with COVID funds. We're now at the replacement cycle and so we did have to increase, I think, all three districts' budgets for a little bit more to start doing the device replacement. And then the big line item here to half of that 84,000 was the gen ed transportation. As I mentioned, we sort of have that first year as a catch-up, a larger increase. And then there's, there are more manageable increases of years two and three and then four and five. But a big chunk of that 84,000 is the increase for transportation on the gen ed side. And we're also, as we all are at home, realizing increases in our utilities on the delivery side. Obviously, we have contracts for our supply, which we can have some control over, but it's the delivery that's continuing to escalate. So we did increase some of our utility line items to try to keep pace with that. And then we always like to highlight that where there is a little bit of revenue that does come in on behalf of the schools to the town that does help offset your budget that we're presenting tonight. And based on the governor's preliminary budget, Sherborne is expected to get about $900,000 in Chapter 70 funding. So that is a direct offset to the budget that you're approving. We don't always talk about the revenue side when we talk about the school budget at that level, but I think that's an important data point that we share with you and we share with the community that there is some revenue that comes in to help offset your budget.
Don, how is that number calculated? How do they get to that?
It's, it's actually a pretty complicated calculation, but they take your census and they give a, they do assumptions of how many EL students you have, how many special ed students, and they build a budget based on what they think the foundation, so the base amount that you should be spending. And then worked into that though is also your community's wealth factors. And so they set a minimum, they set a base foundation amount that they want all school districts to spend. And then if you need help matching that foundation budget to make, make sure that you're doing the minimum spend, that's what your Chapter 70 is for. If you hit certain financial limits, you have to, most towns around here pay 85% of the foundation and we get maybe 15%. But remember, the foundation is also the bare minimum. So we spend more than that. So that is where it's, you know, you can, there's a whole spreadsheet that you can look at. But basically, they want to make sure that in each community, there is a base amount that's being spent. And based on your community's wealth, how much does the state contribute to that to help you meet that?
Got it, yeah.
And so the other piece we always look, and I should have said this before, we look at Sherborne's school budget in two pieces. One is the operations at Pine Hill and the second is based on the regional agreement. The Sherborne school budget does include out-of-district placements for any Sherborne resident age 3 to 22 who is placed out of district. So it means that they have educational needs that we cannot facilitate or address here in district and they are attended private or a collaborative or another state program. So in fiscal year '25, we had budgeted 13 and we're budgeting 14 for fiscal year '26, knowing that I think we actually have 14 this year, right now in 2025. We're looking at a net increase in tuition and transportation costs of about 140,000. Just so you know, we budgeted 4% for school tuition costs. They vary a little bit depending on the category, the 4%, it's a good average to use. And our transportation cost per mile, because the majority of our students are transported by the collaborative accept and they use a model that's a per mile. So the per mile increase between '25 and '26 is 1.6%. So a very nominal increase. It's, it's actually the most cost-effective way for us to transport students. So we're very happy that we are, feel very fortunate that we have that opportunity to combine our transportation, transportation needs with other surrounding districts for that sort of cost efficiency. And keep in mind too, that we receive circuit breaker reimbursement. That's another calculation that is, it's not complicated, but is calculated on a per-student basis. If you spend more than four times the foundation, the towns have to pay for that. But anything over that, which is around $50,000 for fiscal year '25, you get 75% reimbursement back on that. So the way the town of Sherborne operates is that we take some of that circuit breaker reimbursement that we know we're going to get and we apply that to the operating budget. So you're not fully budgeting for 100% of your out-of-district, but you're, we're budgeting for everything but 400,000. So 400,000 of that's going to be paid directly through the circuit breaker fund. And so it's always important to look, I think, on your financials. You'll always see that little number at the bottom. So your true operating cost or our, the general fund budget and then whatever we charge to the circuit breaker. So just look at your total expenditures for the year, you need to add those two numbers together. So we are looking to use 400,000. That is almost 100% of what we're going to get, but we do have a little bit of leftover. So we still are going to have some for a safety net. But we did take it to the, the limit as far as helping offset what the taxpayers were going to have to fund. Hope I keep going backwards on this. Okay, so where are we looking at our budget drivers? We're bringing forward a fiscal year '26 operating budget. Oops, did I just do that?
Sorry.
Ghost. Of about 8.4 million. That's an increase of a little under 200,000, so 2.31. Keep in mind that if we did not have all of those salary savings, that number would be larger. So we're, if you look at fiscal year '25, we had some retirements, but you're looking at a 4-point, 4% increase. So you can see how that definitely helped us have a, a smaller increase for fiscal year '26. So looking at just the in-district and that's where you see the big impact. Your increase in in-districts, .7. And that's mainly because we set all of those salary staffing changes that were favorable offset all of your salary increases. So we're really probably just looking at some of that nominal transportation and technology and such that we had to add. So we're only looking at $50,000 increase on in-district. It's always interesting to look at the per pupil budget expenditure. So we, on in-district only, we're looking at a per pupil expenditure of a little over 19,000. That's a 2.6% increase over the fiscal year '25 amount. I always caution that when you start looking at around you at other districts for the per pupil, you just have to make sure you're comparing apples to apples. If you look at the regions per pupil, it's fully loaded in that we have benefits in there, health insurance, property insurance, everything you can think of. Your numbers don't have that because a lot of those expenses sit in the town. So just be cautious when you're comparing to make sure that other school districts that you're looking at, is it fully loaded, not fully loaded? When you go on to Desi and look at the per pupil, it is because of our end-year report, we have to pull in all the town costs that are attributable to the school and they build that into theirs. So just important, I, it's a, it's a good data point to look at, but you have to be cautious about when you try to go compare it. And then obviously, on our out-of-district is where you're seeing $140,000 increase of about 14% year over year.
And that's the one, if I recall correctly, that we do the best we can, but we fully expect that there's going to be variance based on student need, correct?
Yes, yes. And we, you know, we really manage, if you think about, there's 14 students in the whole town of Sherborne. We do everything that we can in the Connections program and your pre-K, integrated pre-K, definitely keep students in district, but being a small district where you might not have a cohort for a particular student, it's in their best interest for better education to go where there's a cohort and where there's the staffing that could potentially better serve their, their needs. So looking at three years of actual and then comparative to fiscal year '25 budget and what we're proposing for '26, you can sort of see the trends. If you look at the percentage of changes, we're only seeing $32,000 increase in salaries. Again, if you add, you add about 260,000 of that, you'd be more in line. The other educational experience, that's where your expenditures, that's where you're seeing the math come out because we pull 73,000 of math. And then if you look at the general education transportation, when I said about half of that 48,000 was transportation, that's the increase of 48,000. And then the 12.5 is actually utilities. So it sort of shows you in a more condensed version, all the different things that we talked about. And then you can see the out-of-district where tuition only went up 26,000. The issue we were having was with transportation. And again, we saw that in fiscal year '25 operations. So that was something that based on the transportation needs that we didn't forecast in 20, when we were doing the '25's budget, we're seeing the negative impact in '25 and we're building it into the budget for '26. Also at the bottom, for each of those years, you can see the circuit breaker funds that were used. And then obviously, '25 is budgeted. So we are sort of staying in that same dollar frame right now. We don't have any wild swings because I think that we pretty much stay within a range of out-of-district. It can flow one way or the other, but from a standpoint of looking at in total, we've been applying about the same amount of circuit breaker year over year. So looking at another way of our budget, we said, okay, so how much of our budget is going towards direct in-district educational services? So direct services to our students. So staffing is approximately 5.1 million. Listed here for you are the different categories of our staff and how many FTEs we have in each of those categories. So you can see general education, instruction, which is all your classroom sections plus your specialists, plus our literacy and math coaches. And the educational assistance support is, is 40.2%, or 40, sorry, 40.2 FTEs. Special education is 20.1. Then you have your guidance and your support services with librarian and nurses. So we have 64.4 FTEs that are direct service to students. On that same budget arena, you have our expenditures, which 250,000 covers everything we need to, the supplies we need, the textbooks we need, the professional development for our staff, our technology needs. So I think we do a lot with a little. And so putting those two numbers together is 5.35 million, which is 75% of your in-district budget goes directly towards working with the students at Pine Hill. But they can't do that without sort of some support. So the, on the administrative and related support service side, you have staffing of approximately 1.2 million. That includes all the shared expenses of our central office staff plus your building-based administration staff. And also we're including facilities in that. So obviously, we have to maintain the building and clean it on a nightly basis. And then on the other side is the expenditures. So we, as we know, transportation is a large cost, but we also have to pay for our utilities and maintain the building. And then there's some small amounts of general, non-instructional operating expenses. So that's about 650. So if you look at that, that's the other 25% of your in-district budget. So I think we do try to run as lean as we can on that side. So as much as we can of your budget, we can put back to the individual students.
Do we split the shared central office cost a third, a third, a third?
No, every position is, has a little bit of a different allocation.
Got it. So it's actually, if you're 75% region and 25% Pine Hill, it would split it that way?
Yeah, so like central office, I think Beth and I are mostly a third, a third, a third. Denny's like 60, 20, 20. Some of my accounting staff is 50, 25, 25.
Okay, interesting.
So over time, I think as those positions were created or added, whoever at the time sort of allocated how that expense was going to be shared, like the facility director is like 80, 10, 10. Some of it was to make the budgets work when the position was created and some of it is how we sort of really look at the allocation of work.
Does that change over time or it is, kind of is what it is?
That has been the same, I think, for a long time. So once the central office sort of shared was set up, I think those allocations have remained the same. And in most cases, they make complete sense. And, you know, if we revisited it today, it'd probably be almost the same.
Great, thank you.
And then just looking at overview of out-of-district, your tuition cost. So theoretically, you take the 400,000 plus the 890 to really come up with your true tuition cost. And that is made up of 14 placements. And we'd like to share just a little bit of insight as to where those students are in their progression through the grades. So we have five placements at pre-K to five. Keep in mind that two of those placements are at Chicreen. So although it's out-of-district, it's sort of still feels like it's in-district for us, but it's a better way for them to go over and be with our cohorts and the teaching staff at Chicreen. We have six placements at six through 12 and then three placements at 12 plus. Keeping in mind, we cover students in some situations up to 22. So I think that's interesting to see because you can think about how they can progress. And given that, maybe if we don't add any more placements, you can see when we might be rolling placements off. So that's one of the data points we'd like to share just to give you some insight into where. It'd look totally different if we told you 14 of those placements were at pre-K through five. So it is, it's good to see sort of where, where they are and where you might see them roll off your budget in the future.
Once someone moves out of district, do they often come back? Or it's so there isn't really a pattern?
We do have, we do have students come back in, in district. Yep, sometimes it's just a, they go, maybe they need to get help up to elementary or middle school and then they can come back and join us. It's always our goal to have them come back if we can and you will see. So when you look at the roll forward, we'll usually say return to district as one of the categories. So there, that is always the hope that some students can transition back after they go to out-of-district. And then unfortunately, transportation costs is extremely expensive, as you know, just in general, the cost of the vehicles, the cost of the drivers, the cost of the fuel, and the fact that we are driving some students in excess of 80 miles round trip in a day. So, and we, and you've got one or two students at that rate. So that sort of justifies the 259,000 that we have in the budget. It would be probably double that if we didn't have the ability to do our transportation for accept. Any questions on the in-district or out-of-district or the data points that were shared?
Don, you've mentioned this before, but just to be slightly redundant, it's, I found that it's important for people to remember that our, our teachers are paid at different levels, you know, based on experience and their tenure here. It's not a one-size-fits-all, it's truly on an individual basis. Just a PSA, if you will.
Yeah, so that's if, you know, to get a feel of that, if you look at the educator's contract, you'll see the matrix and you'll see all the different salary categories that can be in any given year. And so they are scattered all over the place. And that's why typically when you have a retirement, it's probably one of the educators who have more tenure and more education here, and that's where you see the savings. Because you obviously can go back and hire someone not at the far corner, but you know, more in the middle. So that is where the retirements definitely help us keep our budget balanced year after year because we don't have everyone making the same. So excellent point, Christine. And definitely we'll be talking more about that next year as we go back into negotiations. So we talked a little bit about circuit breaker and how that cost sits outside the budget. It's worth highlighting too that there are some federal and state entitlement grants that we receive that you cover services that you don't see in your general fund. And we always like to highlight those and we highlight these every year. Because if there was any reason why we would lose any of these grants, there are things that we probably would have to build into our general fund budget. The largest piece we have is we get a special education grant and that is approximately a hundred thousand dollars and that covers about three educational assistance for the sped arena. That probably definitely if we've lost that, we might would have to probably have to incorporate that in some way. It might means we have to give up something else. Sherburne is considered a rural community, so we receive funding from the REAP grant, which is there to sort of support literacy in rural communities. And we do use that to cover one of our interventionists and part of our assistant principals position, given that they're based with curriculum. And then we receive some other small various title grants of about thirty thousand that cover our mentoring program, some tutoring support, it's a little bit of professional development. And Chicreen, I mean at Pine Hill, there used to be a little bit more of a title grant and one of our interventionists was also partially funded by that. But you've seen that now swing back into the general fund a little bit more because that title one grant varies based on your low free and reduced lunch income. And so you can see a great swing if you go below five percent. Your grant actually greatly reduces. And two years ago, that did happen to Sherburne. So we went from like forty five thousand down to about twenty.
And are any of the, I mean, it says federal and state. Is there, there's obviously a lot happening with the federal Department of Education?
These are actually all on your on yours are predominantly all federal grants.
Do we have any concern about them? Will we get them in twenty six? Is it guaranteed or do we not know yet?
I don't think it's necessarily hundred percent guaranteed, but I will say that the more reading I've been doing and I read an article yesterday, I think that made a lot of sense. These are manned, so the Department of Ed at the federal level is really overseeing low income students, special ed students and like the student loan arm. The the low, the free and reduced low income students and special ed coverage for students is federally mandated. So even if the Department of Ed goes away, those mandates don't necessarily go away. So the funding is probably going to have to be distributed somewhere. So I don't see that like being immediate. I think we'll have to see are there strings attached to the grants, how that will work. But I don't, I think reading that, the fact that it's a mandated funding, it could just be handled by somebody different. It could come to the states and handle. So that's that's what we don't know.
Close monitoring, but no, no concerns as far as?
Yeah, and at this point, at Beth's level and my level, either from the finance people at D E S I, we have not received any any kind of written communication that there should be any concerns at this point. So I think we're all just trying to see where we go. But I don't think we rely on as much federal grants as other school districts and I just don't see that evaporating overnight.
Okay.
And like I said, we even like highlight this on a normal basis, even if we weren't in this sort of current situation. Because if they could, there's always been grants that come and go. And so I think it's just worth being aware of what sits outside and just so that the towns and and school committee is aware. If something happens, we might have to pivot a little bit.
Good, great, thank you.
Dawn, when in the year do we get these grants? Do we get them early on in the year, end of the year?
Yeah, so we apply for the majority of these grants in August. And so your goal is always to get them approved so that we can start school with people on payroll and such on that. So we'll get the notification during the summer. Yeah, so they do the they do fiscal year just like we are, so July to June. So just swinging a little bit to capital projects, because again, that's another arena that we asked the town of Sherburne to fund for us. Just an update on the fiscal year twenty five H V A C replacement project. I did have to make, so if you look at your packet, it looks like the bid is March twelfth. We had to extend it a week because, and I don't think it's a bad thing, so don't get worried. One of the sub bids was the electrical sub bid was due last Thursday. We did not get any individual electrical contractors to bid on that. What you do then is send amendment out to the general contractors to say they need to include the electrical work in theirs. And given that, we pushed it out because that's probably a little bit more work on their end. So we're looking at a bid opening date of March eighteenth. And again, just as a reminder, we're not really sure where this is going to come. We have four hundred thousand dollars approved. Some of the initial cost estimates were twice or if not more than that. So we built the bid with sort of an alternate to see if they, we could at least be able to pivot and do one or two of the three units, hopeful that we can still maybe do the three. I think what I mentioned is that once we get the bid, if there's some additional funding that would bring this to being able to do all three, we may call a meeting with the school committee. There's some other additional funds that we might be able to allocate from the school committee standpoint. And the town said they'd be willing to work with us to maybe come up with a little small additional amount to also help us achieve this. I think there is a threshold to where we want to go with this. And so I think we just have to wait and see what the bid market is going to do. I think all the current events is not necessarily in our favor that are happening out there. So we'll just have to wait and see. So March, I was hoping it was going to be soon, but it's going to be March eighteen. And then looking at your fiscal year twenty six requested projects, we haven't talked about this in a while because we presented this in November and then it's such a small amount that the the capital committee in Sherburne has already approved it, but we are looking to replace three classroom floors in the downstairs library wing. And then I just wanted to highlight again the Pine Hill building assessment. So we still have the task force. We put it on pause just for a little bit, but I think we are looking to engage D R A, who did the building assessment for us, to sort of be a consultant on this project. Obviously, they do this all the time and so they would sort of work with this group. And we will continue to move that forward once we get past this budget season.
And I guess one question I have is, I don't, do we, is that task force final? Are we considering adding like a facilities representative or Chancalene from town? Or how do we think about the participants on the task force?
Yeah, so we started with this small where we had at least a representation from each of the major departments of the town and it probably will expand. I don't see it expanding too much during this initial task work, but if it goes to the next step, I think that's when you would see it more broader. So I think there's a lot of work that we just have to do conceptually.
Before we?
Exactly. And I think that's why, you know, I've I've reached out to D R A to see, you know, you do this. Can you just sort of help guide us into what we need to do to sort of see what the next step is that we take?
Got it, great, thank you.
And then we always like to take the budget hearing opportunity to, obviously, we've we've thanked the town of Sherburne. But I think the other important thank you is to the C S A and the Sawood Fund. I think that their contributions, both financially as well as volunteer hours, is immensely invaluable to the education that takes place at Pine Hill and I think helps add as little as extras that at all four schools, our parent groups are just phenomenal. And I think that's what makes this such a special place is both the talent that comes forward and then the financial support. And again, you, most of you have been on C S A and you know how incredibly supportive it is and the curriculum and the events that you bring to help build the Pine Hill community. So we take this opportunity to thank them because they are really a big part of our whole operations when you're looking at it from a financial standpoint.
So thank you so very much, Dawn. That was some wonderful, wonderful, comprehensive presentation. I might need your help wordsmithing this motion.
Oh, it's very easy.
Okay, yeah. So I would like a motion to approve the F Y twenty six version two budget, moving it towards the town level for consideration.
You can just say you vote to approve the fiscal year twenty six operating budget. And I'll say, I actually put the amount in the memo for you, so eight four three two, two eight five. So eight million, four hundred and thirty two thousand, two hundred and eighty five dollars.
Oh, perfect, okay.
And that's all you need to do.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the F Y twenty six operating budget at eight million, four hundred and thirty two thousand, two hundred and eighty five dollars. Do I have, do I have a motion for that?
Kristen Aberley, please.
Thank you, Kristen. Do I have a second?
Becca Hammond.
Thank you, Becca. We'll do the roll call because Nathaniel is on Zoom. Nathaniel, how do you vote, yea or nay?
You're muted.
You're muted, I'm sorry.
Yay.
Thank you, Nathaniel. Megacarrialla, how do you vote?
Yay.
Thank you, Megacarrialla. Kristen Aberley, how do you vote? Thank you so much. Becca Hammond, how do you vote?
Yay.
Thank you so much. Christine Walsh, I vote yay. The motion moves unanimously. Thank you so much. And next up, continue, more financial reports. So Dawn doesn't get any breaks.
Oh, yes, okay. So very easy, your warrant reports of warrants that have been processed since our last meeting. And again, you can see those are broken out by the funds. And so you see circuit breaker on there, you see food service, belting, rental, et cetera. Again, if you ever have any desire to look at the details, we keep copies at central office. Because I think they probably break them apart once they get to the town after they're signed. But happy to share that. You also have your monthly status of appropriations as of February twenty eighth. I bold new information, although the numbers I still keep bold, so I don't think if the the numbers are bold, it's not because there's new information. But since we last met, there there still have been some placement changes in out of district. So total cost, so not number of placements, but how the placement costs are. And so there did have a favorable impact to the budget. So the positive variance increased to a hundred and eighteen, up from ninety thousand. So remember, we were having a positive variance on the tuition costs, but a negative variance on the transportation. So at the end, we're still negative, but you're a little bit more favorable than we were when we met in February and you were looking at your January numbers. So again, just sort of the volatility that can change on a daily basis on one of the prescribed services that a student may have at a placement. So we are looking very solid in looking at almost, you know, we will still have expenses to be incurred in substitutes and supplies and such, but we'll definitely have a turn back to the town this fiscal year.
Thank you so much. Next up, are there any questions for Dawn? I'm sorry. Hearing them, next up, we have superintendent's comments.
Great, thank you, good evening. Just to follow up on Dawn's conversation around the school building project, I just want to suggest that in your leisure, you look at the M S B A website. That's Massachusetts School Building Authority website. And you'll notice that it's very complex and very dense with information and hard to navigate. So I'm not sending you there to find frustration, but for you to understand what a big undertaking this is and why it's going to be so invaluable to have D R A kind of walk our hands through this process, whether it's a rebuild or renovation, because it's it's really, really complex. Other than that, a few updates. So a few weeks ago, I had the opportunity with Monique Marshall Veal, our Metco director, to attend a gathering at the State House with all of the other Metco superintendents and directors. And we got to meet with some of our legislators. It's really an opportunity for us to advocate for the Metco program and talk about its value to our community. While we were there, there was a professor from Tufts, Professor Elizabeth Sutren, who has taken twenty years of Metco data and analyzed the trends over time for both our Boston students and our suburban students. I sent this to you in an email with the, you know, executive summary as well as the long white paper. But I just want to point out that over the last twenty years, in terms of our Boston students across all Boston, across all Metco districts, they have found that our Boston students, because of their participation in the Metco program, have increased M C A S scores, are suspended less often, their school attendance is better. They get better scores on the S A Ts, they take more A P exams and their scores are higher. They are accepted to more competitive colleges and they're more likely to graduate college in four years. So I think that says a lot about the program. In terms of the impact on suburban students, which in our case would be our Dover and Sherburne students, there is no effect quantitatively on their achievement. They continue to achieve at high levels. I think the the real measure is the qualitative effect, which the professor referenced, in the richness of of experience and diversity that is to have students from other experiences and backgrounds in your classroom and how that can add to your education. So I just wanted to point that out to you. Speaking of government, Massachusetts is broken down into round tables of superintendents. So we belong to the tri county round table. So there's forty two districts kind of within the big circle around Boston. And our superintendents come together each month to do mostly professional development. But this month, we took it upon ourselves to invite in our local legislators to talk about our needs and our hopes moving forward with the budget and with bills and laws. So we were joined by our representatives from both Dover and Sherburne. Our representative from Dover, interestingly enough, is a former teacher and principal. So it was really neat to talk to him because he understands our world. But that said, you know, we talked about, I talked with both of them about our, you know, work in the district and some of our strengths and some of our challenges. But then we had superintendent specific superintendents get up and talk about kind of our concerns as a whole constituent. And I just wanted to share those with you. The first is around special education. We're concerned generally that, you know, the needs of our students continue to become more intense. And is there a better way for Massachusetts to take a step back and say, we can better educate and support our students if we approach it either through more collaboratives or by thinking outside the box? So we're asking that the Commonwealth bring together a kind of a task force to look at that, including educators, special educators, legislators, to see if we can do this better and more efficiently for our kids. The second is around the future of public education. For those of you who are with us, in two thousand and nineteen, you know, we had the Academic Innovation Committee that looked at kind of the future of education and we developed the portrait for graduate. And we're asking that the state of Massachusetts create a statewide academic innovation committee and that we continue to be leaders in the nation about how we provide education for our students. And maybe that needs to look a little bit different in the year twenty twenty five or twenty thirty than I did in nineteen twenty five or nineteen thirty. So hoping that will come through. And lastly, an act to provide a sustainable future for our rural schools. Believe it or not, Sherburne is a rural district and there are some districts that are more rural than us in Massachusetts. So it's really just reminding our leaders that there is a need to make sure that the specific needs of rural students are not potentially different and with more financing than other districts. So some fun news is, as you know, we rolled out a new website two years ago. And if you've been on there and you see your children, you realize they're a little taller and a little older than they were then. So James Dillon, who is our photographer, he is a D S dad. He had two sons come through the system and he lives in Dover, has been bopping around the schools over the last few days, taking photos. So pretty soon, our website will be updated, our presentations will be updated, our annual report will have great new photos. But it's just so neat to be able to see all the joy and all the learning that's captured. It's just so vibrant and so obvious, so can't wait to share that. Christine was with us when we presented to the Sherburne Advisory Committee our budget as your representative. And I just want to share with you something that came up that I think is important for the entire committee to know. There were questions around Pine Hill's rankings in U S News and World Report. So as you know, right now, in U S News and World Report, the high school is ranked number one in the state of Massachusetts. And that is based on class size, it's based on teacher to pupil ratio, it's based on S A Ts, M C As, A Ps, college enrollment, et cetera. At the elementary level, you don't have all those data points. And at the elementary level, all that U S News and World Report looks at are M C As scores. But they don't just look at like the actual scores of M C As. Yes, that's fifty percent of the equation is how did you do compared to other districts in math and science and and literacy? The other half of it is they take our, the race of our students and their socioeconomic status and they assume what we should get and then compare to what we actually get and then rank us. So while we might be ranked two hundred something out of twelve hundred elementary schools in Massachusetts, if you look at just our in Massachusetts, if you look at just our strict merit and our scores, we are much higher. And we're very comparable to our, you know, comparable districts like Wellesley, Wayland, Weston, et cetera. For example, in grade four ELA, we're ranked 26th out of 1,200 schools. Grade five math, 17 out of 1,200 schools in Massachusetts. And in some cases, don't say this out loud, but we rank better than chikering at our MCAS score. So I just wanted to make sure that that is a fact that's known and can be shared when people bring it up. Which brings me to our continued work around academic excellence. You know, if you've heard all about the math program, we're going to talk a little bit about literacy.
Yes. So yeah, it's been all math all the time. And now we're kind of switching to, now we're switching to thinking about our literacy programming. So just want to give a quick update about our program review that we launched this year, a little overview, and then happy to take any questions. So the last time the ELA curriculum was formally reviewed was in 2017, 2018 school year. Then we had, at the beginning of that program review, COVID happened. It was in that time period that the current ELA programs, units of study, foundations, integrity were put into place. So we've come around to a point where it's time for us to look at our elementary ELA programs again. So in the first year of this process, we are following the DESI Suggestion Guide for How to Review Program and Curriculum. So in this first year, what we're really looking at is figuring out what we value in an ELA program. We're looking at research, about what does the research suggest or best practices in ELA programming. Surveys went out to teachers and staff to answer these questions. They also went home to parents and caregivers. We have that data now. And we've created an ELA program review committee that's going to take a look at all of this information and think about the criteria we want to set for our ELA programming. When we think about that program review criteria, we're also consulting the Reading League, which is, you know, one of the leaders in the science of reading, Ed Reports, which reviews a lot of elementary ELA programs. The Massachusetts DESI Curate programs, that's Massachusetts teachers have evaluated various programs. And obviously, we're thinking about our Portrait of a Graduate and those skills. Again, another thing that we're looking at, we won't go through all these slides, but we're looking at the research and what the evidence is showing, our effective practices. So I just took two slides from the presentation we had last spring from our literacy coaches. Just knowing that we are constantly looking at, you know, what is coming out. One of my favorite people to follow is Tim Shanahan, who has some great information about early childhood literacy. So every day, myself, the literacy coaches, we're taking a look to see what the research is showing, our effective practices. Our ELA program committee is made up of general educators, special educators, specialists, or literacy coaches, our building leaders. We have a middle school ELA teacher on it because we think it's important to have that through line through middle school, as well as myself. Again, our main work this year is synthesizing all that information we had and figuring out the set of criteria that defines our ideal elementary ELA program. If we have time this year, and we are being very efficient, we might get to the point where we can take that set of criteria and then look at our current programs, units of study, foundations, integrity, and see how they compare to the criteria that we set up. Empowering Writers is a program that is just at chikering. So once we get to that point, that's when we have to figure out, does our current programming align with our values, our current research and the frameworks? If the answer is yes, then we'll keep programs in place and make adjustments as necessary. If the committee decides that the answer is no, that's when we would begin researching other ELA programs. In the event that we find out that our current programming doesn't meet our criteria, this is the rough timeline of how that might look. So next fall, we would launch another committee, an ELA pilot committee, to research other programs. We would do that by examining current reviews and research and evidence on these programs. We would do site visits and interviews in other districts. Actually, today, our two literacy coaches went down to Attleboro and we're looking at one of the literacy programs there. And we have been bombarded with sample materials from various companies. There's three huge boxes in central office right now, because everybody wants to send their materials to us. So the goal then would be by spring of 2026, to be able to make a recommendation to the school committee about what programs to pilot in the fall of 2027, and thinking about what that pilot, wait, that's not the right date, in the fall of, fall of 2026, what programs we would pilot in the fall of 2026. We would pile those programs in the fall of 2026, in the winter of 2027, hopefully have a recommendation to the school committee for potential adoption. And then we'd be looking probably the earliest fall of 2027 for implementing new programming. So we will see where this road takes us. I think if we learned anything with the math curriculum pilot process, it is to make sure that we're listening to our teachers, because they're the ones that are doing the heavy work and having to implement. So we had started out with two programs for the math pilot, and then we decided one wasn't working, picked up Reveal and tried that. And that's what we ended up with. And we realized we needed more data and more information. So this is a rough sketch of the timeline, so we will see what happens. In the meantime, I know some people have asked, you know, what is happening to our current curriculum as all these things might be going on? That's where our literacy coaches are so skilled at working with our teachers and making sure that the existing curriculum is meeting our students' needs. So example, for this year, we brought in our phonics screener, we brought in our evidence-based phonics intervention programs. So it's not like kind of resting on our laurels while this whole process is going on. Every year, we're looking at ways to strengthen the literacy program. So that is the rough timeline. We're going to
Can I ask you a timeline question?
Of course.
And you kind of mentioned it, but my memory is that the math program we piloted and then ended up doing an additional pilot. Do we think that this will be enough? Like, is this different enough from the math experience? Or should we just plan to do a full year? How do you think about that piece?
I think that's where this pilot committee is going to be really important. That's when we need to decide how many teachers are going to pilot these new programs, how many grades, how many teachers in each grades, and how many units. For the first year of the math pilot, teachers just piloted one unit, and that was just not enough to get information.
Got it.
We dropped it in in the middle of the year. And we kind of need to know what it's like to start with these programs, because a lot of curriculum at the beginning is norm setting, establishing routines. So I think we've learned a lot from the math experience, and we'll kind of take that with us into the CLA. So I'm hoping that we figure out a way that makes it a more expedient process. But again, we'll listen to the teachers and see where, how they're feeling and what kind of the landscape looks like right now.
And when you say a unit, that's like a two to four week period. Okay. So basically, taking the lessons learned from math, we hope that we will be able to be enough teachers, enough units, et cetera, so that we won't, it won't be a full year necessarily, but we can optimize. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Definitely. So we'll continue to keep the committee up to date. If you go onto the Dover Sherburne Teacher Learning website, there's a whole page devoted just to the ELA program review, where you can get more information. And then we're anticipating in June, giving a presentation to the Dover and Sherburne school committees to update you on what the committee has decided is that criteria for a program that we're looking for. So, let's play a quick update.
Thank you so very much. Thank you. Any questions before we move on? Okay, so I do not believe there are any discussion items or action items. So we will move on to the consent agenda. First item is approval of the minutes from our February meeting. Did anybody have any edits to that? I did not either. Thank you so much. And then Superintendent McCoy, could you say a few words about the annual school committee vote on Massachusetts school choice law?
So each year, every district has to decide in Massachusetts whether or not they want to participate in school choice, which would allow students who do not live in Dover and Sherburne to attend or be put in a lottery to gain seats and attend school here. Oftentimes, as Dawn reminds us, it's an opportunity for larger districts to gain revenue. It's $5,000 that were given per student. And oftentimes, if districts have empty seats, why not take the money of students and put them to good use, right? Here, as you can see from the budget presentation, we spent well over $19,000 on each student. And our class sizes, you know, can shift from having three sections to two sections to four sections to five sections. So a few students here and there can really have a shift. So for years and years and years, we've said no. So the vote in your consent agenda is to maintain the no. However, if you'd like to reverse that tonight, you know, that's up for discussion. And just as a reminder, oftentimes, when we do have wiggle room with enrollment, that's when we invite our Boston students to come and join us.
Any questions around that? Additional Boston students? Or that, those are the placements where we say at a given year?
No, additional. Yeah, I mean, ideally, we accept Boston students in kindergarten so they have a long journey of experience. But of course, you know, if we're seeing that there's been a little bit of drop in fourth grade, we invite students next year to join that cohort.
That do a lot of the schools in our area participate in this?
It's kind of 50/50. Yeah.
Okay. And then additionally, we have a gift approval. And as everyone saw in their packet, this wonderful memo from Dawn requesting approval for a gift of $1,000 received by Kate McCarthy, Director of Student Services, on behalf of Pine Hill Elementary School, from Lewis and Meg Randa, co-directors of the Life Experience School and the Peace Abbey located in Sherburne. The monetary donation also included an invitation to have students and staff visit the Peace Memorial Park. And our own Ms. Custodio shared even additional context with the school committee members around this beautiful gift, but also this beautiful relationship with the family. And so I think it's just absolutely wonderful that this relationship and this generosity is being considered and continued. Any questions around the gift? Okay, hearing none. I would like a motion to approve the consent agenda as described.
Becca Hammond, so moved.
Thank you, Becca. Do I have a second?
Kristen Aberley, second.
Thank you, Kristen. All right, we're going to do roll call. Nathaniel, do you vote yea or nay?
I vote yea.
Thank you. Megacariela, how do you vote?
Yay.
Thank you so much. Kristin Aberley, how do you vote?
Yay.
Thank you, Kristin. Becca Hammond?
Yay.
Thank you, Becca. Christine Walsh, yea. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you all so very much. We have informational items in the packet. We have the minutes from the Dover School Committee meeting in January, and then the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee meeting minutes from January and February as well. Please do reach out to me for any items that you would like added to our May agenda. That is so hard to say because we're in not even mid-March, but we, as a Sherburne School Committee, will be meeting at May, on May 6 at 5:30. And unless there's any other orders of business.
Just a reminder that you, as a committee, won't be meeting, just the five of you, until May 6, but you'll be meeting with your Dover Regional Council, twice in April, that's April 1 and April 29.
Yes.
I was wondering if that's a mistake?
Now, so the first one is when I present to you all my evidence and goals and updates about, you know, a lot of other things. And then the last one is when you present my evaluation.
And then there's one more.
In June.
In June.
And then we will, we will have cupcakes as we close the new, this year. Cupcakes will be delicious. Any other items before we do adjourn? Okay, hearing none. I would like a motion to adjourn this meeting, please.
Becca Hammond, so moved.
Thank you, Becca. Do I have a second?
Kristen Aberley, second.
Thank you, Kristin. Nathaniel, we're going to need you one more time. Do you, yea or nay?
I'm going to answer here.
I know. Yea or nay to adjourn the meeting?
Uh, yea.
Thank you so much. Megacariela, how do you vote?
Yay.
Thank you. Kristin Aberley, how do you vote?
Yay.
Thank you. Becca Hammond, how do you vote?
Yay.
Christine Walsh, yea. And this meeting has been adjourned at 7:33. Thank you all so much.